I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November 19th, 2019. This is a Prescott City Council study session. Let's please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Shoal.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you for that. Thanks for coming out today, everybody. Hopefully you brought your umbrellas because I'm hoping it's going to rain later this afternoon. If you'd like to make a public comment, please grab a public comment card on the table and get it to one of our clerks. Before we get started, we have two items, discussion regarding the amendments to the water policy as well as mayor's commission on FOPU. Before we do that, I thought everyone would like to know this. I just received an email from Daniel Winkler, who is with U.S. Senator Kirsten Sinema's office. Mayor Mangarelli, I come bringing good news today. You all may already have heard the announcement, but today FAA notified us of a $10 million award in AIP supplemental funding for the terminal construction.
Yeah.
So, uh...
I love it.
We're excited about that. It's been a long time coming. Yeah. Okay, let's do, uh... What'd you say?
Let's hope to check, cleanse the bank.
Let's go to item 3A, please.
Discussion regarding amendments to proposed city water policy.
Forgot where I was for a second. So, we are back again with our water policy proposals. We discussed the proposals in detail at the last voting meeting. Some changes were made. Those changes were distributed to all of you as part of your packets. They were posted on the website. I'm here to, more or less, answer any questions you may have and discuss some of those changes. Section 2-1-8, rather than saying any prior agreements, we're just saying that exemptions are for agreements made prior to 2005. As you may recall, 2005 is when we first adopted a no new connections outside of city limits policy. So, we know we don't have any outstanding contracts after then. We still may have a number of them before 2005, so that was the main change. Section 2-1-12, just discussed, no changes were suggested at the last meeting. None were made for the meeting today. This rolls into city code, no wells for properties newly connecting to city water. So, when you have a property that you newly connect to city water, you need to abandon your well. It's been the city's policy for many, many years to do that for alternative water, not for groundwater. Now it will be across the board as part of our code. Section 2-1-18, this removed a few outdated surcharges, which we discussed at the last meeting. It also includes our fire protection fee, which we always intended to just apply to built structures, so built properties. We made that clarification in the changes for this week by clearing, specifying that it's only developed properties to which this fee would apply. Section 2-1-24, if you'll recall last time, we were just changing the person that can give authority from the city manager to the public works director. No changes were suggested at the last meeting. None have been made for this meeting. In section 2-1-76, this is our sewer connection. Again, this is rolling something from our policy into our code. There was some discussion at the last meeting about how the exemption should be awarded. And rather than having exemptions, we just clarified that structures, new structures built in the city limits that have sewer either abutting their property or existing in the right-of-way next to their property are required to connect to the sewer. The intention here is, again, that not everyone has to extend the main or put out a lot of money to connect a sewer, simply that if sewer is right there next to your property, you need to connect to it. In section 3-10, this is our conservation code. As we discussed, we're just allowing for dual flush toilets because they're more available. The suggestion was made at the last meeting that we retain authority in the city manager to approve different incentives than what are currently allowed. So, we've made that change back from the public works director. Last is the land development code, section 6-5. This, again, is our plant list, plant use list for plants that are required for development of multifamily, commercial, and subdivisions. No changes were suggested at the last meeting. None have been made. Now, with regard to the water policy itself, it was suggested that we remove the mort from the policy as we haven't have a, we don't have a, an example of that yet. Our working version is here at the city. We have done that by removing it from our water policy. So, with those basic changes, I'm happy to answer any questions. From the outset, I would remind you all that none of this will have any effect to our existing water customers and city limits. No one has to give up their wells. No one has to give up their septic tanks or connect to sewers immediately. Really, all this does is make it so that we manage all of our water as one water source so that everyone is subject to the same rules and requirements when they come to get water from the city.
Clyde, thanks for that. There was a section 602, if I recall, that we looked at that was pulled back.
That's correct, Mayor. As part of our discussion at the last meeting, it was clear that the council was uncomfortable with the requirements of water connections from the outset for new development. So, we have decided to remove that and then add it to the mayor's commission on sewer connections, which will, at some point in the not-too-distant future, be the mayor's commission on sewer and water connections.
Yep, very good. All right. Question, comment from the council? Councilman Good?
Thank you, Clyde. My original concern about the prior agreements was just that in the future, after this change was made, someone could potentially make a claim that they had a prior agreement between the time the amendment was voted on and sometime in the future. So, changing that prior to 2005, I think, is probably even better because that clearly would put only possibly unknown agreements that surface. I know there had been a lot of old, old agreements that had been made, and we weren't even totally aware of them, nor are we completely certain that every other agreement has surfaced and has been looked at. So, I think that's actually an improvement. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Okay. Well, great. We'll have plenty of time for public comment. So, let's go to that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I wasn't quite ready, so let me find my comments. First of all, I want to make it clear that I'm not speaking, I mean, that I am speaking as an individual citizen, not as a member of any organization. I want to thank Councilman Lamerson for his years of service, especially as Chair of the Water Issues Committee, and I'll miss you, but I'll come visit. I have some questions about the water policy document beginning on, it was on packet page 50, which don't, I don't know if anybody has anything in front of you, but under number three, under the water connection policy, it says water will be provided, but no specific amount of water will be allocated to any project through separate contract. I have more concerns even than I did when I wrote this for last week after I heard a discussion between the city manager and council member Orr this morning, and it seems pretty clear that the city is contemplating or perhaps promoting sharing the City of Prescott's water with other communities in the AMA. So, I'm, my concern about this provision is if not by separate contract, then what kind of agreement will cover the provision of water? If no specific amount of water will be allocated, then how will the water be allocated and how will the water be subtracted from the 16,507 acre feet in the city's water portfolio? I know I've been told by a couple of staff people that they would be using the water resource management model, but that's an estimate or else it's an accounting afterwards. So, I don't see how we can have agreements that don't say how much water we're giving out. And on the next page of the water policy, number B5, is that the, we would present the project to the Water Issues Subcommittee for recommendation, but if there's no specific amount of water, then how is that, I mean, what is going to be presented to the Water Issues Committee? And then the next item, B6, is the city council will vote on the proposed project and water use, but if there's no specific allocation, then what is it that, that you're voting on? So, could someone please just explain that to us?
Yeah, I've taken notes, and then we'll answer all questions after public comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Leslie.
Mayor and Council, I know we've gone through this for close to six months, and I think it was worthwhile. I know there were comments made how we've spent so many meetings doing this, it's about time to settle the issue, but I think it was worthwhile to extend it because the proposal has improved over time. There's only one, actually, there's only one issue that I wanted to bring up, is the change that was suggested at the last meeting that someone would have to connect to sewer if the sewer abuts their property. Now, that means if the sewer is 10 feet from their property, the city will not require a connection. I think the previous proposal, at least part of it, is a better proposal, to have people hook up to city sewer if it's within 200 feet, but if it's in a difficult area where there are rocks or it's expensive to connect, there would be a provision that if the cost was, say, over $30,000, then the person would not have to connect. So, if it's within 200 feet, the city has a purpose here, I think, to connect people to sewer. That's what we want to do. We don't want to make it easy for people not to connect to sewer. And if the sewer is 20 feet away, we're making it easy for them not to connect. So, I think maybe there could be a compromise. Last meeting, there was a discussion that, there was a phrase in there that if it's hardship, and there was no definition of hardship. So, I think if we put a dollar figure in there, it's very clear that people need to connect if the sewer is within 200 feet unless it's, and we can define a hardship as over $30,000. It's the public benefit, it's to the benefit of the AMA to have people connect to sewer instead of septic. Septic causes a lot of problems, fouling of our water shed, loss of effluent. On the other hand, connection to the city sewer benefits the AMA by providing additional water that can be recharged. And that was one of the main thrusts of this whole proposal, is to have people connect to septic, I mean, get off the septic and connect to sewer. So, I don't think it, we should say that if they're 20 feet away from a sewer, they should not connect. I hope you would, I hope the council would consider something along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Kathy Rusing.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much. I am honored to be speaking here as a concerned citizen. First of all, as a council member-elect, I would like to respectfully make the following recommendations to the proposed agenda items concerning the water policy. I feel there are some clarifications that need to be made. First of all, the new water policy is really just a water service agreement. No mention is made of safe yield, overdraft, or of our AMA. And also, I'm concerned because our water portfolio is either being eliminated or streamlined to the point that the little Chino Aquifer groundwater, the big Chino Aquifer groundwater, imported water, recharged water, credits, and alternative water are all lumped in together somehow, and I find that very confusing and not very much of a plan. More specifically, 9C, number one, the new water policy should have a date attached so as not to confuse it with the previous water policy, i.e., City of Prescott Water Management Policy with a date, month, and year. And it also includes the verbiage superseding all previous water management policies. I find that too vague and too broad. What is meant by "all" exactly would suggest that the wording be more specific, i.e., calendar year 2018 Water Management Policy with the resolution. And also would like to see more boilerplate language included, such as all previous contracts, agreements, and allocations made under the prior policy or policies are still in force. When you rescind or revoke a previous policy, you need to make that perfectly clear as to are all the previous agreements null and void, or are they still in force? And if they are still in force, which ones? It's very important that we be mindful of litigation and possible lawsuits because, as you know, water is for fighting. And lastly, in order to promote more truth, transparency, and public input, I have a major problem with the verbiage mayor and staff. The council is elected to represent the people yet is left out. Oddly, the mayor is the only elected official mentioned. And also, since the city manager, who serves at the pleasure of the council and therefore indirectly at the pleasure of the voters, is left out, I would like to create, correct this oversight to include mayor, city council, city manager, and city staff. May I go on, or should I?
You got done?
Well, I have a few comments. I was hoping to be on the council so I could make these comments, but unfortunately, that was prevented. Most importantly, I agree with Leslie Hoy with the water connection policy, number one. Oh, I'm sorry. I agree with her that this sentence, water will be provided, but no specific amount of water will be allocated to any project through separate contract. I find that very vague and confusing, and I have a very hard time understanding that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
Mayor, that was the last speaker card.
Okay. So, jumping back a little bit here, guys, to page 50, 51, Ms. Hoy brought some questions. I don't know if Clyde or the manager...
All right. So, first, Ms. Hoy suggested that because we weren't having new water service agreements in city limits, what agreements would we use? The answer to that is, in city limits, we don't need agreements to manage our water. We can do that through code. The only reason that we would need an agreement is if it's outside of city limits, where we can't manage that relationship through code. That's when you need an agreement that someone agrees to specific terms that we can then enforce. We can enforce everything we want to enforce within city limits without a specific agreement. That's why it's not necessary in city limits. We've used them in the past simply so that we can track how much water we have because we didn't have an accurate way to do that. Because we do now have an accurate way to do that, we don't need the service agreements, at least, again, within city limits.
Okay.
With regard to how water is allocated for projects, because of the clause that says water will be provided for a project, but no specific amount will be given to them, that is to prevent the continual overallocation of water that we've done in the past. Currently, we've overallocated around 1,500 acre feet of water, simply because we say, you're going to need this much, here's five acre feet of water, and then the project never uses anything close to that. We never try to get it back. It just stays out there. It's overallocated and it's gone. The way allocations will work under the new policy is we can determine, more or less, how much they'll use. If it's infill, we know it will use essentially what their neighbors use. We can base it on average of their neighborhood, what the average home in their neighborhood uses. We can base it on the subdivision, so the average home in the entire subdivision. We can even just base it on the average age of the home. So, if it's a home that was built in 1919, it's going to be remodeled, we can, know it will, it'll need this much water. We can also just use the citywide average, which is why we're not providing a specific amount, we're providing approval of a project. Because ultimately, what someone, when they build a home, they don't care if they get .1 acre feet or 20 acre feet, they just want to be able to build their home. So, we're going to change that external approval for, yes, you can do your project. You can build your home. You can build this shopping center. Internally, we will reserve water within the worm based on what that will likely use, based on the neighbors, based on the type of commercial use, based on the type of use that it is. After five years, it no longer becomes an estimate, it becomes their actual use. We can get rid of the estimate and simply base their water usage on what they're actually using. This will allow us to actually track water based on what people are using rather than just an estimate that we never look at again.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Clyde, can you state that again? We've overallocated 1,500 acre feet?
That's correct. Yeah, approximately 1,500 acre feet.
Through water service agreements?
It is, yes. And another big part of that is when we allocate water through a water service agreement, a developer thinks, great, I've got this water right from the city now, and I only used 10 acre feet of my 20, I'm now going to try to sell this other 10 acre feet. I'm going to get the city because I own this water through an agreement. There's no reason for us to continue doing that.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to say something on that one.
My wife and I use about a tenth of an acre foot. The allocation was for .25 acre foot, which means that we could probably put in another lawn, we could do all sorts of things in order to get up to .25 acre feet because that's what we were allocated. That's unreasonable to do, but realistically, theoretically, if somebody was going to look at that, they'd go, hey, I've got a lot of water. I can misuse it here and misuse it there, and I'm still going to be under. So, I think that what you're doing right now is superior to what we were doing.
Ms., Mrs. Rusing brought the, you know, kind of the contract still in force, you know, having some language that talks about previous contracts and those kinds of things. What were your thoughts on that comment?
We're actually prohibited by the Constitution from voiding contracts that we've entered into. So, you all legislatively can't just say, well, we don't like that contract, we need to get out of it.
Ex post facto laws?
Yes, that's correct. So, there's really, there's really no reason to do that because we're already prohibited from doing it. Contracts that we have that exist, they will continue to exist. No reason to overstate it.
Councilman Good?
Clyde, have we had any examples of such a claim that you just described, or someone was allocated .25 and used last and said they're entitled to that balance?
I can think of at least three off the top of my head. In the Water Issues Subcommittee, we deal with them on a fairly regular basis because a developer will come back and say, well, my project, I have another five acre feet of water, I'd like approval for another 20 houses or whatever. We, it happens pretty regularly.
Yep. Councilman Blair?
Hence the fact that Prescott Lakes was a lot of, the amount of water for each phase of their development in a bucket, so to speak, as Lamerson would put it. And when they finally platted the whole thing out, they had a bunch of water left over. And so, they came back and wanted to re-densify an area of that development after they've already told people what they're going to build next to them. They wanted to double the density, and the city council at that time said, no, that's not what the water was for, but yet somebody tried to do that because they didn't use the amount that they were awarded, so to speak.
Yeah, and Councilman Good, I've had that experience as well once where a developer, you know, finished the development, said, hey, I had this water left over. Now, he's looking at another development going, well, I, you know, I, I sort of have this entitlement, or at least I know you have it in your water portfolio, so, you know.
So, we'll still be able to track actual usage and our concerns about ADWR's requirement to separate groundwater and alternate water through the worm analysis after the fact?
We can, yeah. So, because the worm is both a database and a GIS, it's been integrated with our GIS system, we can determine water usage based on geographic areas. So, for instance, all of those neighborhoods that were part of our groundwater allowance, we can determine what they are and what they're using. We could then restrict water for just those accounts. We could do a lot of things with this tool. This is a base management tool.
You better have some very serious security on that database.
Well, it has the, the ownership information and water usage information for every water user that the city provides water to, from all of our water customers. And we treat it just the same as we do, as we treat our billing data. It is extremely, extremely close-kept. It is not something that is publicly available.
So, really, the only limiting factor would be the increasing costs of water usage through the tiered water rates that we have?
I'm not sure I follow.
Well, if someone says, I'm gonna, this is my project, and I expect to use, you know, .15 acre feet a year, their project is approved, and then they decide they're going to put a bunch of turf in and they exceed that dramatically. Well, we don't have a specific allocation that we're going to monitor and say, you violated your agreement, because that doesn't exist anymore. But if they decide that they are going to dramatically increase their use, then they're going to get increasingly high water bills that will theoretically keep them from expanding beyond what's considered reasonable.
That's, that's generally right. Because we work with averages, there are always going to be some people that use more water. There's always going to be some people like the Shishkas that use less. We currently don't enforce those water service agreements on individual residences, simply because it's difficult to do. So, when you say this entire development can have 10 acre feet of water, it's all the way built out, and they're using 10.5, who do we enforce that against? Which homeowner do we pick to shut down? So, it's a difficult thing to enforce, which is why we have the tiered water rates to discourage people from doing those things.
So, that would be the ultimate limiting factor?
Yes. I mean, we always could go after individual homeowners. I'm always happy to sue somebody, but it may not be the best use of staff time.
And you just said that on the record. Thank you.
You bet. You don't have teenage children in your house, Councilman, so...
I know, as a matter of fact, and thank goodness.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I'm using a timer on one of them right now. So, I thought Mr. Mechanic brought a good idea. You know, there's kind of a continuum here where it's obvious when it's adjacent or in the right-of-way that it's going to be probably about the same money hooking up versus a septic. So, you know, it makes sense for that person to hook up to sewer. But then, when you get 20, 30, 40 feet out, I mean, it's not a whole lot different. And so, he brings a good point. I wonder, Councilman Blair, if this couldn't be a part of your job with this commission? We keep adding stuff to it. But to look at, you know, what, what is the hardship? How, what is that dollar amount? You know, could that be a part of what you guys study when you're looking at these sewer and water issues?
I think, yeah, we could amend it somewhere down in the future, but I think there's a lot of elements to go along with that. You have grinder pumps, you have people on slopes that may be 30-foot down slope, or they have to put in a grinder pump unit that's, you know, $15,000, $20,000, and then eject it uphill to the sewer line. So, there's a lot of variables that go along with how you hook up to a sewer, certainly obstruction, granite boulders, pink granite, whatever the case may be. And I think that's one of those things you have to look at a case-by-case basis, or maybe put in, into code somewhere in the future, some examples. You know, I, I don't think it's a clear-cut thing that you can do on that one.
Yep. Yeah, understood. Councilman Good?
Yeah, I asked this question of Mr. Hallstead earlier today, defining what exactly a "but" But his answer, and please confirm this, is that virtually every new construction would be abutting or have a easement that would create the sewer line across their property that would allow them to connect with it directly. So, there wouldn't be any distance concerns other than the distance from wherever they decide to build this new home or structure, and then the distance to connecting to the main sewer line.
That's correct, yeah. So, for any new development, they will have sewer lines that... So for any new development, they will have sewer lines that are immediately adjacent to their property. They're going to have it in the right-of-way, right there at their homes. For infill development, there are still some areas that don't have sewer lines. And this would, at least for the time being, not force anyone to extend the main, particularly into a particularly difficult area. Like if somebody did some infill in North Prescott, we're not going to make them put in a sewer line that the city wasn't willing to put in. So as a placeholder, this would just require people, when they build a new home, to connect to the sewer if it's already right there. We can study this further over the next year.
Yeah, I think that's good, because, you know, the bottom line to it is, it was addressed, even though they live outside the city, they're in the city, they're on Kyle Street, and the guy wants to hook up the city sewer, but it's not in front of his house, it's across the street. However, it's where he can get to it. So I think our mission should be is to hook up all the sewer, you know, septic tanks that we can, and then we need to look at it realistically when we're approving those agreements. But I think it's going to take some more research on it.
Yeah, it's interesting. There's a lot of these places, you know, Gurley Street, as you go west out here, there's no sewer main in the road. And so there's quite a few properties, some of which haven't been developed, and there's no sewer in the right-of-way, right there. So that's why we need, yep, that's why we need you to do this work on this commission, I believe, to kind of figure all the, flesh all that out. Councilman Good?
Yeah, I had one other concern regarding the water conservation incentives, where we're changing from Public Works Director to City Manager. But it also allows a little more discretion by the city manager to change, approve higher incentive awards, et cetera, or even create those that aren't listed in the code.
Which one are you looking at?
That would be Exhibit 310.
310, yep.
Section G. And I just want to reemphasize that as long as we keep the incentive budget in the annual budget, then that creates a limiting factor that allows the city manager to make these changes, but it still will be restricted to the point of how much money is allotted and allocated for that, for those incentives within the budget. So it just doesn't open the door totally for non-oversight.
Yep. Right, and this is in code currently. The proposed change was to switch it from City Manager to Public Works Director. That wasn't palatable for the council, so we're switching it back to the city manager. Essentially, we're leaving it the way it is now. And the city manager has used this authority a few times fairly recently. I think it was Skyview School that you approved a rather large incentive award for a very large-scale rainwater harvesting system.
Institutional red wine harvesting versus an individual or one commercial location.
Great project, by the way.
Rainwater? I thought you said red wine or something.
No, it was not red wine. You know, I was just doing a little quick math, because I think this is kind of telling. As we've had conversations about protecting our assets and being good stewards of the public's money, at 1,500 acre-feet of over-allocation to the private community at $18,000 an acre-foot of market value, that's $27 million of over-allocation to private developers of a city asset, our water. It's a lot of money.
Anything else from the council on this one? Okay. Thank you for that. Thanks, Clyde. We'll move on to Item 3B.
Recommendations from the Mayor's Commission on Facility Optimization and Property Usage Regarding a New City Hall.
Good afternoon, Council Mayor. My name is Jesse, just in case you don't know me, but part of the commission of the facility optimization and property usage, and just bringing back the updates from last time we all met together and talked, and the update there was, was we brought just kind of the facts of where we had been in our project so far. The idea that we did an evaluation of the properties that Prescott had, that the city owned, and then asking the staff, asking the maintenance, and all those things, just what are the status of those, and then what are some of their hardships. And at that point, we found a lot of findings of just that things obviously are getting older and older. As we're growing as a city, we're outgrowing our spaces, and just all the different needs that were coming from that. And so at that time, we wanted to find out the appetite for what would it look like if this location right here would be for sale, if there would be any third parties interested in that. And so we put out for an RFP. And so that has now closed, and so this is just the update from that process, the update you all, what happened there, and then some recommendations after that. So we did put out for RFP, and we met twice, the commission met twice in October, and it was to evaluate. We only got one single RFP back. And so we met, and both of them were executive sessions, just obviously discuss kind of the details of all, what was involved in that. After the first meeting, we asked the city to go back and speak with the company that had the RFP in, and just do some further investigation along those lines, and then kind of came back from that. And so from the whole process so far, here's kind of just our big recommendations that we're going for. The number one is that the city is going to need eventually new facilities, just based on the structure as it is, and it's getting older and older, and the maintenance costs there. And then also staffing-wise, just on size staffing-wise, the number of staff we have, but then also from a customer service side, is something that we heard from individuals in the city, but then also a lot of the staff and managers and different department heads here, just the difficulty of, as our old philosophy, as we've gone right now, we've bought more and more annex buildings outside of this location, and that's getting harder and harder to manage, on the people's side, but then also from the city interaction side, it's really kind of, makes it difficult to give the city the best customer service that they need, as we're sending people over town, and there's different little kingdoms and departments and things like that. And so based on that alone, we do really recommend that we need to start thinking about, we need to start making a plan, and that's kind of our big recommendation, is more than thinking about, we need to start developing a plan for a new city hall. That that day is not an if, but it's a when, that that day is going to come, that we're going to need new facilities, and we need to start planning for that. And so that is our first big recommendation. Second recommendation is to start to build a plan on how we're going to pay for that. Based on the one RFP that came back, we didn't know exactly where things were going to come back, but the reality is, is that that's going to cost the city some numbers, some money. It's not a situation where we can just say, "Hey, can somebody else come in and rebuild city hall for us? Then we'll give you a little bit more land." The numbers didn't pencil for anybody for that to be a reality. So the reality is that this construction project is going to cost the city some money, so we need to start to plan for exactly what that is. And then our third recommendation, just because we know it's a difficult thing to ask a city for money, especially for new offices for ourselves, and it's just never easy, but it would be to put some kind of terminal date on it, so that we are working towards something, we're putting something in concrete. And that would be our recommendation of start making a plan and say that we know we're going to eventually need new facilities. And then also, as good stewards of all this, to start to make a plan of what that would look financially, how are we going to get that money? And then also to put some dates out there, so that we're kind of keeping ourselves accountable, because it can easily be something that we can kick down the road forever until it's like, "Hey, that's not my problem. We'll wait till the next council, or the next mayor, or whatever, can tackle that unpolitically correct or happy situation." But then at that point, we're not really being the best stewards, because then we're acting like something catastrophe happens, or we're losing money because of the facilities. And so just kind of being that good steward of saying, "Hey, let's set a date, even if it's not politically happy, but let's get the ball rolling on something like that." And so that's kind of our first big recommendation, is make a plan, set a date, and start figuring out money. And then our second recommendation is just to start to figure out what that money thing looks like. And we did look into it, there's obviously, and you guys probably know more than us, but there's options to pay through, we can still do other RFPs, we can figure out different ways, better offerings that we can offer to the third market, as we get more specific with that, and once we know what our needs are. There's the bond, we can always do a bond option, we can start making a part of the budget right now and start saving towards that, and just the different options, but to start to at least investigate that and to start to make a plan of that. So that's our recommendation, is the day is coming, we know that we need to get serious about it, and that we should start making a plan for it.
Jesse, thanks for coming and reporting to the council on this. Thanks for your work on the commission, as well as the other folks that stepped up to help with this. I was disappointed, like you, that we only received one RFP proposal back. I was hoping that there would be more private interest, that maybe there would be some way forward with a public-private partnership, where this really wouldn't cost the city much of anything. We didn't see that in the one proposal that came back to us. I think there were like 14 different entities that interviewed prior to doing the RFP, so I was disappointed in the number that came back to us. But, you know, I think about an airport terminal, looking at a couple guys that have been around here a while, and, you know, they started a number of years ago talking about the terminal, and today we received the final piece of funding to get that thing going, and it's pretty cool. And I look at this similarly, hopefully not as long, but similarly, you know, where you got to start somewhere, you got to start talking about it, you got to start making plans. And so I appreciate your recommendation and your work on this, and, you know, it's kind of back in our lap, I guess, at this point as a council. Any questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Have you guys come up with any kind of a ballpark cost estimate of what the city would need to start planning for? Now, that's a, it's a big, big number. Our hope was originally to have some type of a public-private partnership, so that the net cost of the city would be as minimal as possible, but what are we talking about as a total project cost?
Right, and let me bail Jesse out just a little bit here. It's a good question. Weren't we talking about 33,000 square feet, or somewhere in that ballpark, in terms of a need?
It's between 32,000 and 36,000 square feet, and, you know, if you just take easy math, $250,000 to $300,000 of square-foot construction, you're looking at $9,000 to $12,000 or $13,000.
And what do we currently have now, Michael?
You know, it depends on how you look at it. This building is like 22, 23, I think. But if the idea was to consolidate some building services from Virginia Street and Public Works, if you were to close down the Human Resources, Motel 6, and Mark's Finance Department, you need about $35,000 to $37,000.
And we recognize, and in the discussion, there's a lot of efficiencies gained with a new building versus, you know, like what we have here is definitely not efficient, how we use space here.
I kind of put a rough number together based upon the county's parking garage, because that's what we need to have here, essentially, at least I think we do. And by the square footage and by the parking garage, I think you're looking around $15,000 to do what we need to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Well, Jesse, appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. Thanks for your work on the commission.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are done with our agenda. This meeting is adjourned. We'll see you at 3 o'clock.